I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
I'd like to thank you all for coming, and I'd like to just add a little thing here. We recognize our new police officers coming in tonight, and we really covet our police officers and think they're very important to us. So, Mark, is there any public comments from -- anybody asked to speak?
I've had no documentation from anyone wishing to speak.
Okay, okay, we have the approval of our minutes from last time?
And we have executive session and the regular council minutes.
Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that we approve the executive session minutes.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Jenny, can you take the roll?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Okay, the motion has been passed. We have nobody for the public meeting, so.
One more set of minutes.
Mr. President, we got your regular session meeting from the first of November.
November 4th.
All right, I can't hear too well.
I make a motion that we pass the minutes from the last town council meeting, November 4th.
All right, do I have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in the second. Jenny, can you please take the roll?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Motion has been passed. Okay, nobody for the public meeting now. And now, A, swearing in of the new police officers. Clerk Treasurer and Police Department, please come up and.
Mr. President, council members, good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you our new police officers, if they'll come up here, please. Officer Wilson and Officer Oller. Officer Kennedy Wilson grew up in Avon, Indiana, and got her bachelor's degree from Eastern Kentucky University. She interned shipped with us last year. She also played D1 volleyball, was quite the athlete. So we're glad to have her here. And over here, we got Quentin Oller. Officer Oller grew up in Clayton, Indiana. He graduated from Purdue University with a bachelor's degree as well. We was lucky enough to get him from Trafalgar Police Department. He's already a certified police officer, a couple of years of experience. So, we're lucky to get both of these people, and I'll turn this all over to Jenny. This is the swearing in ceremony. This is something I've did a few times and had the pleasure of being a part of many times. So this is a great moment for both of these officers that are young and their families. So after the swearing in, we'll try to get some photos with whoever they'd like.
Jennifer?
Percy?
Clerk Treasurer?
I'll have you come and stand in front of me. Raise your right hand, please. I'll do Kennedy, and then we'll be your setter. I, Kennedy Wilson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Indiana, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as a police officer of the Town of Danville, Indiana, according to the law and the best of my ability. So help me God. Okay, I will have to have you sign this. I, Ben Oller, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Indiana, that I will faithfully, impartially discharge my duties as a police officer of the Town of Danville, Indiana, according to the law and the best of my ability. So help me God.
Let me be the first to congratulate you.
Congratulations.
We look forward to seeing you around town, protecting us.
You didn't notice? Oh, no.
Well educated.
All right, Greg, I was taking pictures. Yeah, no worries.
Officer Oller has new twins. He's the new father as well.
Born three minutes ago. That was yesterday, right? Was it yesterday?
It was kind of real small, so.
Oh, okay.
Maybe about a month.
I understand.
Yeah, you're doing it.
Mr. President, council members, I appreciate you letting me take a few minutes of your time tonight to introduce these fine young people. And Mrs. Percy, I appreciate you being here to swear them in for me. I know you enjoy it, and we enjoy you having me here. So I appreciate all that, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I know it'd be a great initiation for these new officers to have to endure the rest of this council meeting, but if you'd like to let them and their families dismiss, I think it'd be appropriate.
Okay, ready for the next one? B, appointment of a park board member. I'm going to go ahead.
We only had one application that met the political affiliation. That was Bill Sutton.
Okay, well, I will appoint Bill Sutton as a park board member.
And I believe, Jewel, I know it's a presidential appointment, but he still needs council support on that, or is he allowed to just go ahead and appoint? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good to go.
On to the next thing. C, annexation introduction, town planner.
Good evening. I have property known as 527 North 50 East, owned by Rex Wilson. I'm introducing for annexation. We will be, this will be on the agenda December 2nd for the public hearing for the annexation. And if I could have just a couple of minutes of your time, we have some properties that are in this area as well. I've spoken to probably two or three people that are interested in annexing the property. And so, Will, yeah. So if you can see, like, right at the corner of Columbia, Sycamore, and 50 East, that's the Wilson property. I've also talked to the property owner across the street from him to the west. And then, if you go to the east, there's three property owners, and then there's three or four down on the south side. And what I would like to do is contact those people, see if they'd be interested in annexing, doing a super voluntary annexation, and bringing them in all at one time. The process of meeting all of the guidelines, the timelines, and the public hearings, it's pretty complicated. If we could get them to come in all at one time, I think it would be beneficial. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Sounds good to me.
Make sure they don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think our attorney might, you have something you'd like to say on that?
I was gonna say that it is also a very good idea, and we spoke about this a little bit earlier, too, because with every annexation, you need fiscal studies completed, and each fiscal study costs money. So if you have one fiscal study to take in multiple parcels, that is much better than taking a fiscal study for five individual things and doing it that way. So I think it's great planning by the planning department to reach out to see if the interest is there.
Okay, thank you.
One of the other things that Lisa and I spoke about is to set windows for annexation. Because of the stringent timelines that we're required to meet, we feel that, like with, I don't know, BZA meeting, where you have to say, you have to meet this deadline to be on that meeting, we feel like there needs to be a deadline for annexation. We say, okay, we're going to accept annexations on this date so that we can meet these specified deadlines. And it's, we don't have people coming in willy-nilly, I guess, so to speak.
And that's how it is right now. I mean, anyone can file for annexation, and then just trying to get them, get the schedule figured out can be complicated. So I think we're gonna look at the calendar and say, okay, what date can they come in and apply so that we can meet all of the notification requirements? So we'll be working on that, too. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else? D, capital expenditure request, wastewater department.
Mr. President, wastewater department could not be in attendance tonight due to an exposure to COVID-19. So if council will indulge me, I'm going to stand in for them. They're asking for two, and I'll take each one individually. First, they're asking to request a request to purchase two new choppers. This is a replacement request based on preventative maintenance. I'm gonna be quite candid, I don't know what a chopper is.
I think we can figure it out.
But I think when it has to do with wastewater, I'm sure it's, we've got it covered.
Helicopter.
Yeah, but the cost for the two of them is $19,313.54. have the clerk treasurer give us the final approval on that.
Yes, he has sufficient funds.
Okay, any conversation on this, any talking councilman? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve this expenditure request for wastewater for the two choppers.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Motion and a second. Jenny, can you take the roll call?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
The motion has been passed, and we have a second. Do we do the second one as well? E?
This was requested to remove trees and brush in work zones of their future sewer main repair project. Again, they anticipate this being a 2021 project, but he wants to go ahead and secure the funds now. The cost to have these trees and brush removed is estimated at $8,450. And again, Superintendent Crisp has advised me he has the funds, but obviously, I'd rather have the clerk treasurer verify that.
Yes.
Any conversation, councilman? Do I have a motion to approve capital expenditure?
I'd make a motion that we approve the expenditure for the removal of trees and brush.
Second. Do I have a motion and a second? Jenny, can you take the roll?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
The motion has been passed, thank you. F, resolution 11/20/20, transfer of funds for the police department.
Mr. President, council members, back again. What I'm looking to do tonight is to transfer some funds that I've had, it'll be leftover salary and wages from us not having our positions filled for the last year. What we're looking to do is to replace our tasers, and I'll go in a little bit more detail on that, just because our tasers lifecycle, it's about eight years old, and they've lived their course. Basically, about five years is what they're usually good for. In the role that we find ourselves in these days, it's imperative that our officers have a less lethal option. Just having it is just gonna be great, so we don't have to go hands-on. In the days that we live in, we have to have this option. So I'm coming before you tonight to move some money that we have available, and that way I can actually replace the tasers, and we can get back to having some functional tasers. Just a quick story, just to let you know what shape we're in on the tasers. The battery life is on top of the taser itself, and a lot of them are not working. So when I went to test fire mine at a target for practice, my battery life, it don't really show what battery life I have. So I went to shoot, it did not fire like it should. So a lot of our weapons are in that shape right now. Either the lasers are not working, the lights are not working, or the battery life is not showing us what life we have. So it's imperative that we actually update these. With the fund transfer, that's what I'm requesting tonight from you guys to allow me to do.
I think it's important you have your lasers.
Yeah, yes, sir.
How many lasers?
We're gonna replace them all and get a couple spares. We anticipate having some reserves, we're trying to buy 27.
Okay. Suckers are expensive.
Just curious, what kind of, what kind of battery source are they?
So they come with a battery, it's an external battery. Wish I should have brought one, I can just do a little show and tell for you, but it just plugs into the back end, kind of like a magazine does for the gun, and the battery life.
And recharge it.
No, it's non-rechargeable, no. They do make a rechargeable, and it's like $60,000 for the replacement of all of them, so we went with what we already have.
Okay.
Yeah, very expensive, about $1,200 a unit.
Okay, any comments from the council? Do I hear a motion?
Because this is a resolution, you can't act on it tonight.
No.
You can.
Can.
Yep.
Need to move to suspend?
Nope.
Okay.
Because it's a resolution, it's your freedom to take the, to vote on it tonight if you wish.
I make a motion that we pass resolution 11/20/20 to provide the transfer for appropriations between major budget classifications.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Jenny, would you please take the roll?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
The motion has been passed, thank you very much. Chief?
I'm back here again, once again, with the capital expenditure request. Now that we've passed the resolution to transfer funds, my capital expenditure request is basically to purchase the tasers. So I'd need your approval because it's over the dollar amount, so we can go ahead and move forward with the purchase.
I have one question. We moved $45,000, and it's $32,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Extra funds will go towards some other equipment that we're trying to purchase as well.
Gotcha.
The other issue there, if I may interject, Chief Hilton's original quote, it has been much higher. And from the time that we, that the clerk treasurer prepared the resolution to the time that we were doing this capital expenditure request, he got a much better deal.
That's good. What other equipment are you replacing?
Looking at a new dog kennel for one of our cars. I know that grant money's gonna cover, or the bond money will cover some, but we're trying to also get ahead of the game while we have some extra funds to go ahead and not take from the host or anything like that, and use the money that we already have appropriated.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? We need a motion here?
I move that we, we go ahead with this grant money to replace the equipment that needs replacing.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jenny, can you take the vote, please?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Just to make sure we're approving the capital expenditure request, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has been passed. Thank you, chief. Downtown Danville partnership contract.
Mr. President, during the work study, we had conversation on a possible contract for 2021 for funds for the Danville Downtown Partnership. So during this meeting, I need an official vote on what the council wishes to put in the contract. Once we have that dollar amount, I'll be working with Taft Law to finalize the contract, and we'll bring it back to the council at the, I believe, December 2nd meeting for final approval. So I'm just looking for a dollar amount that you'd wish to put in for that contract.
Any comments from the council?
In previous years, you've done $80,000, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I would say we don't, I'd say we leave it at 80.
I agree.
What did, what did you say, Dave?
Leave it at 80 for the DDP.
I agree with that.
Okay. Any other comments from the council about the downtown partnership?
Do we need a vote on that?
Well, because we're doing it December 2nd, we can, and just take consensus of 80's good.
Gotcha.
I'll go from there.
Do we need a motion?
Nope.
Okay. Next is the Danville Chamber of Commerce. Town manager?
The, this was discussed again in the work study session. The council had discussion, obviously. Last year, we, or this year, we gave $45,000 to the Danville Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, so what's on the table is to increase that by 20,000? There was a, there was a, any of you councilmen want to make a comment about that?
I would like to comment, I would like to hold the line at 45.
Okay. Any other council?
Can you repeat what David said?
I said I want to hold the line at 45,000. That's the current number, right?
He wants to hold it at 45,000.
I think that, I actually think that we should look at increasing the contribution to the chamber by 20,000.
Any other comments? Any motion?
What if, maybe we split the difference? I'll make a motion that we fund the chamber to the tune of 40, or, I'm sorry, $55,000.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. Jenny, will you take a vote?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
No.
David Winters?
No.
Unfortunately, the vote falls on you, Mrs. Percy.
If we do this, the additional 10,000 will have to come out of the host fund.
Can I still make a comment about this before we?
The vote is open at this point, and so she should make her vote without further caution, so once you call for the vote.
I didn't hear what you said.
Once the vote was called, the vote should occur before any other comments are on.
Okay, okay. So, aye.
The motion has been passed, 3 to 2. J, capital expenditure request. Parks Department will present a request to construct additional trails.
So I kind of talked about this last time when I made a request a month and a half ago, and this is pretty much the same thing. A little bit more work involved in this one. Let me pull up the map. So I did finally get numbers, and it's pretty much the same exact distance as the trail before, so here's the numbers and the details, but I'm just gonna kind of walk you through it as well. So we're looking at, with impact fee dollars, doing this second phase this year, hopefully getting asphalt done. We're really close on timeline. So they're two weeks out, which we should have it done hopefully this year if everything works out. But what we're gonna do is, right here, there's this bridge that's crossing that has this non-ADA accessible entrance, and so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna build this up and fix that entry to make it asphalt and make it ADA accessible. So that's number one, what we're doing with the trail. And then also, so right now, you can go this way and go around and come all the way, and then the trail ends right here. So our goal is to finish, this is the second phase of the Trail to Nowhere, to make you go somewhere. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go straight through here, and we're gonna go all the way up, sorry for my shaky hands, and we're gonna cut down here, and we're gonna go behind the Little League and connect over here and fix this, this little bridge right here that we were talking about on the one side. So that'll be upgraded, and then we'll also have an access point here, because one of our plans in the trail plan is that this needs to get a sidewalk and/or trail. So that'll be probably something we attack next year with impact fee dollars, and there's no sidewalk on the hill right here, which is really bad, so those are kind of projects for next year. But as of right now, we only have money to do this little area right here and go around. And then we're also gonna vacate this little, I don't know, little roundabout thing there, because it's not an actual road. So, is that okay, Jewel, too? Is there gonna be any rules with that? The road's right here and right here. This actually doesn't have a name. Okay, that was my only question, but what we wanted to do is pretty much get rid of this, because it's really useless, because you should be able to drive up here and turn left. There's really no purpose in it, and plus, eventually, we would like to put parking here, because they're already parking there. So someday, when we have enough money to actually put parking in, you know, we'll start that parking around. And then we're, we're gonna upgrade those posts and stuff, too, at some point. But this project is this trail here to here. And so now you'll be able to do a loop in Ellis Park, and you won't have to walk on the road, so. It's right around 39,000, but I think it'll actually come in less, because I'm only doing an eight-foot trail, and that quota's for a 10-foot, so.
So you have here 24,000 for the paving?
That's just the asphalt, yeah, and then 14 for the dirt work.
And we have this money, Jenny?
Yeah, it's the impact fee dollars.
Other non-referring?
Any comments from the council?
I think this sounds reasonable.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll move that we approve the, the request for the Trail to Nowhere.
We have a motion and a second. Jenny, you want to take a roll?
Greg Van Leeuwen.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Motion has been passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, approve expenditures by RDC.
Mr. President, the Redevelopment Commission, as you recall, had some money from a defunct TIF district. And I approached you a couple of meetings ago to make some expenditures of that money. The, the RDC had approved it. They made another approval at their last meeting for stormwater work through Commerce Park at about $48,580. We rounded it to 50 just to be on the safe side with RDC, because you never know with, when it comes to stormwater work, what you're going to get into. I excuse Superintendent Lofton from being here tonight. I don't know that we need him. I think everything's pretty much explanatory there in that estimate of what they want to do. So I need your approval to go ahead and move forward with the project. It may be a 2021 project, to be honest with you, but again, the money's coming out of a, of a TIF fund that, that is, has to be used for those specific areas. Is that correct, Jenny?
Yes.
Any comments from the council? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the expenditure by the RDC.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jenny, can you take a roll, please?
Greg Van Leeuwen.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
The motion has been passed. Thank you very much. Now, do we have anything else we wanted to sneak in here? Mark?
I think the assistant town manager would like to talk to you about the jail fees that we.
Yes, thank you.
Some member animal of understanding, and they've put a lot of hard work into this, and I think he wants to give you a report on it.
We had a few meetings, and after the last meeting, we sat down with the county and just kind of, pretty much kind of laid out what, what we thought the lowest we could go is. And it's pretty much a 50% reduction, which is really good. Really kind of us to, you know, do that. The utilities were happy with it. They agreed to it. So we reached out to the lawyer to write up something. They had something that came in to me, but we're probably not to any sort of approval point. But I just wanted to kind of pass this out to you guys so you can look over it. It's $128,814.61, so.
When will we be voting on that?
Once the agreement is. Complete, then we'll both have to approve it.
Correct. So what will happen is, we will send this to council for the county for their opinion on the language. And then, once we agree on the language, you guys will execute this and pass a resolution, a similar resolution that both of you pass at the same time. So the hope and the discussion is all to get it done before the end of the year because we want to get those funds in before the end of the year for the connection fees and everything like that, so.
They said they would pay the full thing at one time before, hopefully before January 1, depending on how long the, the meetings take. But that was definitely a success, I think, for the utilities.
Thank you for your hard work on that.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Van Leeuwen, too, and Mr. Pato, for their hard work as well because they were in those meetings, and I appreciated having their back, so.
Thank you. So we don't need any action tonight?
We're complimenting Will on, on the process. Him and the department heads worked really hard on forging this, this deal with the county, and really, I think all parties are extremely happy. And you know that that's a good deal when everybody walks away happy. So kudos to, to the team on that.
Okay, thank you very much, Will. Mark?
I have several items to report from the department heads. The Public Works Department is still doing leaf pickup. They're also working on Christmas decorations. They're getting their Paser ratings done, and they are going around assessing wind damage from the last storm we had. So they've been very busy. Water Department's finishing up their samples, still doing some hydrant flushing. If they get time, they're going to backwash one of the tanks and work on that well for housing that Will talked about. Police Department, if you hadn't heard, has hired two new police officers. But they have a merit board meeting this week to discuss reserve and part-time officers, and they've been dealing with some COVID exposures. Stormwater and building, they are thankfully paving. If you haven't seen, they're, they're doing some paving on Washington and Columbia, Broadway, Kentucky, Clinton and Indiana. He's also been doing some stormwater work with the new Goodwill store. He issued eight new permits, and the chiller outside the windows here could be the death of him. It's, it's an old unit, and he is fighting it and fighting it and fighting it. He's going to meet with some representatives from a couple of different organizations to see if he can make some type of solid fix that will hopefully last for several years. But I know he comes in every day, and he doesn't say very nice things about the chiller. So. Planning, she's had three-meeting BZA, Plan Commission, RDC. They've done some variances, approved the plat plan for Arbor Homes, and Redevelopment Commission is working on getting a piece of property donated to the Redevelopment Commission. So they will become property owners. So it'll be interesting to see how that works. Parks Department, again, dealing with some COVID issues. They've been winterizing the park, restrooms, things like that, putting together Winterland, as he spoke to you tonight. He has, trying to work on the trail, the sign out front. I think it looks awesome. We're excited to see how it rolls when it gets rolling. And he wanted to thank Public Works and the Water Department in helping put that sign in because they helped keep his costs down quite a bit by moving dirt. Wastewater, again, dealing with some COVID issues. They've been working on lateral inspections, and they've been working with Goodwill as well to get all of their TAPS put in. Fire Department, a surprise, dealing with COVID issues. They've had 1,419 runs for the year. I sent you all an email that administration, we've been dealing with COVID issues. We are going to have the building sanitized Friday morning, like we did back in May. We just think it's a good time to have it done. We have sanitized most generally everything that we believe that employee came in contact with. So we feel fairly comfortable. I did go in for a test this morning, just to be on the safe side. If I've not made it aware, are you aware, I'm leaving Friday for Florida. I'll be gone for a week, but I will have my computer and my phone. I will, I'm happy to work through it. I have no issue. So, so if I get quarantined in Florida, you may not see me for a month. I'm really sorry. It may just work out perfectly for me. I'm just throwing it out there.
I promise not to call you until you get to Florida.
It's fine. Well, I can't, you know, on the plane, I can't answer it anyway, so.
Take you a couple hours.
We did receive notification, and unfortunately, I don't have the final numbers. But Melin did receive another grant through IPEP. It was a safety grant, and I want to say it was around $20,000.
Wonderful.
So we're, we're trying to pound out some grants, so. Also, tonight, I have, Taft Law has looked this over. We have a contract with the state of Indiana that we need to try and get signed. The signatures on this contract are myself and Mrs. Piercey. We had put up preemptive equipment called Opticoms. It's what the emergency vehicles, so they have an emitter on their trucks. It changes the light to give them the green light to go through. When the state of Indiana came through and redid the traffic signal at Main and 36, turns out there was no contractual agreement for our equipment to be on there. We'd hired a company to put them on. I take full responsibility. I was fire chief at the time. State of Indiana's been very gracious. They're, they're basically doing a retroactive contract. So all the lights, we currently have them on there. They're agreed. I'm just looking for approval from the council for Jenny and I to go ahead and sign this. Like I said, Taft's already reviewed it, so.
General consensus or a vote?
Because it's a contract, and you're giving authority to somebody else to sign, I recommend a vote.
Have to have a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Jenny, can you please call the roll?
I make a motion.
I make a motion that we give Mark the ability to sign that contract with the state of Indiana.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Jenny, can you roll?
Greg Van Leeuwen.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
The motion has been passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last thing I have for the council tonight, you appointed a new park board member. Unfortunately, his time on the park board will be extremely limited because his term expires at the end of this year, just the way that it unfortunately panned out with him filling a role, especially as a Democrat. But it does remind me that it is that time of year. I'm seeking permission, Mr. Pato's given to me, to move forward with advertising for our boards and commissions, the openings that we have. Some of these boards, they're yearly appointments. Some of them are four-year appointments. So what I will do is, I will seek the current member to see if they have interest in continuing to serve. But I will put in the paper and our website, the openings we have, and if there is a, a political affiliation that needs to be involved with that position. In talking with Mr. Sutton, unless Will is really hard on him for the month of December, he intends to put back in for that position. So, so anyway, I was looking for consensus, but I think we're good to go on that. I know Mr. President's already approved it, so. That's all I have. I'd entertain any questions from the council of me.
I'm sorry if this has already been asked and answered, but I was wondering how the employee was who got hit in the head down in the park?
He's perfectly fine. He came back with no restrictions. I did give him the day off the next day, but other than that, he's perfectly fine. His pride's probably hurt, like Mark said, more than anything. We had to do a couple safety videos, and we padded the T-stake pounder, so.
All right.
Every policy has a name attached to it, if you know what I'm saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we approve the things, or do we want to have a talk around? The claim dockets or anything, or do we want to?
Around the horn.
What is, I can't hear.
Around the horn.
Around the horn.
Around the horn.
Jenny?
I'm sorry, say again?
Hang on a second, we're about to.
Actually, I have three things, so sorry. It'll, it'll be, I'll try and make, I'll save the best for last. But first, I wanted to say, I really do appreciate everything that Kelly's doing with the Chamber of Commerce, and I look forward to what they'll, what they'll be working on over the next few years and, of course, the coming years. So thank you, Kelly, for everything you do. I, I always like to, this, this is probably just made me more neat for me than anything, but I'm a proud member of the National Rifle Association, so if anybody doesn't like that, I'm sorry, but I'm not sorry. So I get a magazine as part of my membership, and I got it in the mail today, and lo and behold, there's a 2020 graduate of Danville High School on the front of this magazine right here. This is Beth Walker. She's a competitive shooter. And if you don't follow her on Facebook, you probably should. It's, it's really good, very patriotic, and really smart and really good at what she does, and just a good representation, not only for Danville, but for young people. And so that was really cool when I saw that. I, I posted something on, online, and she messaged me, and it was, it was really neat. So it's always good to see local folks, you know, kind of get that national notoriety. So I wanted to, to point that out. And most importantly, today is my wife's birthday. She's 29 again, and she'll never watch these videos, but I'm going to put it on record anyway. Happy birthday, Kendra.
Happy birthday. Thank you.
Thank you. Since the last council meeting, I attended the, the RDC meeting, Plan Commission meeting, and even though I'm not in town today, I also participated in the Hinton County Economic Development meeting today at noon. And they had brought up a little program that they're working on to market some of what they call Dirk. And so I'm going to be sending an email up tomorrow to Brian, and Mark, I'll CC you on that, just to make sure that he's aware of, you know, what's available here in Danville. I'll also CC Lisa on it as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I attended that meeting as well, virtual.
So you picked, you picked up on that, too?
Yeah, before the meeting was over, I was sending text messages to some of the other staff, asking that we be involved in those projects.
Very good.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, anything else? Mark, you've already said your stuff.
Yes, sir.
Will?
Hope to have some action on that sign here in the next week.
Lisa, you want to say anything? All right. Claim dockets?
Make a motion to approve the claim docket.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Everybody agree? Want to take a, a roll, Jenny?
Greg Van Leeuwen.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
The motion has been passed. Thank you. There's nothing else? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm going to adjourn.
Adjourn. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Have a second, motion and a second. Everybody agree?
Yep.
Aye.